In your life.
All meetings order five thirty seven. We have everyone in attendance this evening except our student board member, Mr. Corey Lawrence. Okay, good evening. The board properly placed a discipline is this will be these matter on its closed session agenda. Pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven subdivision B one, which is part of the ground. Also, pursuant to that section, the employee impression was given prior written notice that this matter had been placed on the closed session agenda of today's board meeting and an opportunity to request that the matter instead be heard in open session. The employee is requesting that the board hearing this matter in an open session. Therefore, we will hear the matter at this time. Before we begin, I will take a few minutes to explain the process that we would use to conduct this open session item. Under the ground, an employee may request the board hear complaints and charges in open session. When an employee makes such a request, we are required to hear a matter in open session, which we would otherwise have heard in closed session. We will proceed as follows. First, the board will hear from the administration on the factual basis for the district's recommendation in open session. Second, opportunity for his representative, Miss Kathy Ozmore, to speak.
This is the statement being spoken. The request will be for all investigation immediately. I mean, the request is both that the request both that it should not be on the set. And we have this matter in most of the meeting. The original request was for both that.
Sorry, the audience is speaking right now.
So they turned it on, like couldn't hear what you said. There's, uh, in listening to the script, they're saying that the request was for closed session and they were told that needed to be in open session. And so they're, they're asking a procedural question.
Eileen, you're muted.
Thank you. And the re- the request is, as I understood it, was to, for the employee to be heard in open session.
I have the agreement of the board to know that that was not acceptable. The request is for a closed session meeting with the board. The request is also not using his name and other.
Could you repeat the last? I didn't hear it.
The request is for a closed session meeting with the board and to not use his name and other.
Well, there's, there is no such thing as a semi-open session.
But we didn't ask for an open session meeting. You guys can simply not have a session meeting. We asked for a closed session meeting with the board to discuss the personnel matter. All personnel matters should be discussed in a closed session meeting, not open meeting in front of others. This is a personnel matter should be discussed in a closed session with the board.
And that was how the board agendized it for closed session and advised the employee of the right to have it heard in open session. My understanding is that's what the employee requested. If that's incorrect, we should.
We asked for a closed session meeting with the board to discuss the matter.
But there is no such thing as a semi-open or a semi-closed session.
We asked for a semi-closed session. We asked for a closed session meeting. Going to the ground, we asked for a closed session meeting with the board to discuss personnel matters.
But a member of the public cannot attend closed session.
Representative can. Yes, a representative can. Yes.
So the options available are to let the board hear the matter in closed session without members of the public or to proceed in open session as the board president was outlining.
So the options should be that immediately have it in closed session with the employee and his representative.
So.
For it to possibly, for it to possibly be needing for consulting, to consult with the board. It's not important. And that is the main issue is that the person has not to have their name used in public. And if you can't do anything else about closed session or however your process to guard the back, but not using the name of a viral issue.
I don't know.
And.
You want me to? Close session?
Bridget, what do we leave up on this? Just. Just a brief, a brief. Well, there's. Are you going to be on him down in London? In closed session. Okay, so we're starting now.
So we're. You want me to?
So yeah, we'll put something like, um, board is consulting with legal counsel. Instead of closed session, just, just leave that, just leave that. If I can serve those.
Well, maybe we've got six ten. Um, the board has taken into consideration of this um concern with this item. And to move into this item before session, we apologize for the mention of anyone's name. And it will be redacted from the script. We will have the IT department redact that from the script. Uh, it was our understanding of that uh, the employees wanted to be heard. So, we apologize. At this time, we do have three um public comment parts on this uh item. And I'd like to begin with Mr. Jason Bowen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the board has cited our reserve on comments for the closed session.
You know, what is coming in.
No rear submitted comment.
Uh, important. And I was on these parts that I have to offer. But sorry, we mean.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Well, it's time to move on. Ari and Johnson.
An address. Ari and Johnson, CFO, representative of the matter being before the board is even, I think it's about four point three. We need to ensure the portion of the action that I'm receiving, the board should should consider all facts and all this sort of part of that.
May I just use panel of word?
Good evening, everyone. This is a new thing that I thought I would end this time day. But um, I am heading forward classified meeting president. And I'm speaking tonight because although it's not one of the classified members that is based on disciplinary action. I stand in solidarity with the annual valid college federation and teachers faculty unit members. For this could be anyone of classified members. I'm in disagreement with any decision that would be proposed concerning disciplinary action for this individual with the following reasons. You see, I've done my own research and I found that actions were approved and supported by the employee supervisor. And then I checked around different individuals. It's almost like this whole thing is independently owned and operated. Because of things like the rules are different for each person. Um, also prior to this president that we have now. Who's trying to bring the campus together and have us all work cohesively, being kind to students and one another. Anybody who went against any supervisor for a valid reason, face punitive action. You could not just go against your supervisor, but at least now people are heard. And I think that that bears weight. Um, and I think it's important to understand where we're at. And that we're all being not admonished, but encouraged to be kind to one another, to be um kind to students. And this is rubbing off. I'm seeing it on a daily basis. And I think that there are no clear rules regarding the situation that involved them. I even spoke to the previous dean that's involved in the situation. And he shared with me the procedures that were amended. So I think to hold an employee accountable for a practice that was endorsed by the supervisor is wrong. And I understand that now employees are being given a letter that if they are approached by their supervisors or that are being asked to do something inappropriate. They can legitimately without facing reprisals um bring that to the district's attention so that this matter can be resolved. But they, but they're also uh by doing so, they're standing their ground. And there's no longer that repressive um overseeing type of leadership. That would penalize a person for standing for what's right, but but for against what's in the district. So I think that since the rules, the regulations involving this aren't even clear. I think in conclusion, I'm appealing to you as an employee of annual valid college. To consider what the other speakers have to say, consider the circumstances. And that if actual disciplinary action against the employee um not take place. And allowing this employee to continue moving forward in a positive direction, being kind and serving students. Let's live up to what our mantra is. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Oscar, do you still want to speak?
Yes. I've been waiting so long, but I can give you three minutes. And Pat Dusper and I am vice president of the panel of the five meeting. Starting in two thousand and twenty three, ABC administration began placing full time faculty on administrative leave for the mere allegation of being wrong. No credible proof, no investigation, simply placing them on administrative leave due to unfounded accusations and then investigating. Ed code eight seven six two three B requires, quote, an immediate serious risk of potential danger. And a certainty arising from specific allegations for an immediate involuntary placement on administrative leave. Our administration has placed, to the best of our knowledge, five full time faculty members on administrative leave since two thousand and nineteen. Five full time faculty members were deemed potentially dangerous or an immediate serious risk. Four of those faculty members had been included at ABC for over a decade when they were deemed too dangerous to continue teaching. In this specific situation, if ABC administration followed the legal requirements applied to CBA, this entire situation would have been flawed. If they had administration met with faculty member, presented the accusations and engaged in dialogue with faculty member. They would have discovered that not only is the faculty member innocent for allegations of this project. But it is the administration's own procedures that led to this entire situation. The crux of this matter is a procedure that needed to be addressed and updated by ABC administration. I implore you to read all the documents regarding this situation that we have provided. By reading all the documents, you will discover that this faculty member was placed on involuntary administrative leave without any concreteness. The faculty member was giving vague statements about violating academic and board policy. Please read the original letter he received here, he received when they were removed from the workplace. As you read through the documents, what you discover could the allegations change, the goalposts we completely moved. As we prove through concrete evidence that this faculty member is innocent of an allegation, they essentially changed the allegation. This culminated in a letter from the administration and the faculty member that states. This proposal for dis is not dependent and need not be based upon a determination that faculty member violated each of the terms above. Or that he would cheat within all acts or admission omissions listed below. Faculty members violations for any single charge standing alone support the recommendation for a two year suspension. So essentially, even though we proved the allegations against the faculty member to be false, and we did some of the concrete evidence. The faculty member will be disqualified anyway. From the start of this situation, it appeared that it was known that faculty member, no matter what. From the beginning, it was made clear that ABC administration planned to terminate this faculty member. This determination was prior made prior to the investigation, let alone findings from the investigation. Sadly, it was widely known on this campus that the administration was making plans to form a hiring committee for this faculty member's position. Good job. Earlier today, Dr. Bowen provided documentation to all of you. It's from the evidence provided against the faculty member in truth. From mid minutes of meetings that reported that he was there when the person was actually out on administrative leave. To those eight minutes that report him being there and his date that he's out on administrative leave in minutes. The it's it's pretty amazing what was placed as evidence against him. To the real allegations coming from an employee who wasn't even employed at ABC at the time of the supposed innocence. Please look clearly at the evidence and what Dr. Bowen provided to give it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we will adjourn this session. Thank you.
Pursuant to Board Policy Number 2350, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person for thirty minutes. Participating people speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point of the meeting for open forum or non-agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the board room from the recording secretary or online. We ask that all speakers come to the podium to address the question. We have one speaker on non-agenda topics, and this is Eugene Hernandez. Sorry, Eugene.
Oh.
Please show your body. By twenty twenty five of the United States of America, it's very publicly published that one nation, God, can do this all. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Absolutely. Any discussion? Advice? Or any figure?
Yes, I'll keep it short. I just would like to thank the college and teachers at your college and students who put on a very professional Caesar Chavez week last week with the books that they showed, the art, the movie, and I thought it was very moving and very... It should be something that you should thank the faculty who put it together and with the influence of Dr. Jose Rivera and Carla Corona, I think, was part of the planning committee, and I thought it was very good. Thank you very much.
Oh, now it is. Okay. Good evening, board members, and Ms. Madam President. So we would like to provide an update of what ASO has been doing this year. I am Diana Ferrasoli. I'm the Associated Student Organization President, and this is Steve Benitez. He is the Senator of Arts and Humanities. So for this year's ASO goals were to increase student engagement, increase ASO awareness, and increase ASO representation. So in order for us to increase student engagement, we hosted Club Rush during the spring and fall. We also educated ABC students on the importance and impact of ASO. ASO also began with only two senators and a president, and currently there's a total of seven senators, one VP, and one executive director and treasurer. This makes a total of eleven students. Next, these are our officers and senators. The president is myself, Diana Ferrasoli. The VP of Club is fair is Brandy Lechuga. Executive Director of Public Relations is John Cariaga. Treasurer Jem de Jesus. Senator of Math, Science, and Engineering, Christine Sipin. Senator of Student Life, Ella Ajiman. Senator of Health and Safety, Rosario Corona. Senator of Arts and Humanities, Steve Benitez. Senator of Language and Communication Arts, Jasmine Hall. Senator of Palmdale and Extended Learning, Brian Garcia. And Senator of Social Behavioral Science, Jackie Hernandez. Next, our student trustee is Corey Barnes. Corey Barnes advocated for the student nine-plus-one rights for them to get involved and share governance. He followed the guidelines of AB 367, making sure products were available and free on our campus. He also worked collaboratively with students, classified staff, faculty, and administration to meet the needs of student body. He assisted ASO with outreach events and some planning. Additionally, he trained future student leaders on ABC policies and procedures and assisted students who came searching for answers and guidance.
Hi. So, next slide, please. There's a face. One thing to take into consideration is the diversity and inclusion we're able to see in our club's participation. Just last week, we added a new club. ABC currently has eighteen active clubs, adding Veterans Club just last week from Alpha Yoda, Anthropology, STEM, Black Student Union, CNSA, Deaf Study Association, Grupo Florico, Hola. Photography Club, Pre-Law Club, Psychology Club, LVN, and United Artists for Social Change. Each club has a goal, and I just want to encourage students, there's a place to belong and you love and worthy in belonging in our school clubs. There's power in community. Which brings me to my next point. Next slide. Our events and activities for 2022 and 2023, we had Welcome Week. We're able to pass out school supplies, bags, backpacks, engage students in timely fashion and opportunities on campus. We celebrate the mortos where we donated Mexican miracles to the altar so students could pay respects to relatives. We celebrate Bata La Henta. We offered activities to make maracas for the community and just be able to engage with that event. And we also did another event for You Got This. It's just student engagement where we did pass out coffee, snacks, and green books and Scantrons in this week for midterms and even finals. In spring of 2023, we had the luxury, and this is my favorite, inviting all the high schools around the AV to come and check out the student success. to come and check out the student success conference and the resource fair. By far, my favorite week is talking to each of these students and our programs and connecting with future leaders and giving opportunities for our clubs and intern club council. We actually invited our clubs to come down and showcase their stuff and what the clubs have to offer. Next slide. ASO and ICC, we hosted Club Rush, allowing students to step up and get involved, joining clubs, finding the community to grow in. We also were able to host the Halloween Office Contest, Silent Game Night with D N, D R S Association. And Movie Night Friday by Film Club. So and, and next thing that we're going to be seeing as our leadership luncheon this coming Friday where our leaders will be participating, we have ASO and club advisors coming in for awards on April fourteenth, Friday at twelve thirty P M to two P M at the Helen Exeter Center. Your students will be able to award their club members and advisors and hear from our keynote speaker while having lunch and.
Okay, oh yeah, next slide, please. One of the things that ASO did to lift school spirit was we hosted a pep rally. We also did homecoming. We had a gift extravaganza and we did the California Ballot Bowl competition. During the pep rally and homecoming, we did hand out free vouchers of meals for students to go to the food trucks. We also handed out cupcakes and some, some goodies and some T-shirts for the students can wear that, you know, stated Antelope Valley College on them. That was pretty fun. Next thing, these are some participatory governance committees that ASO participated throughout last semester and this semester, which was the enrollment management, guided pathways, student equity, honors committee, safety, the triple C college coordinating, the honors committee and the strategic planning. Also, ASO assisted with the, oh, sorry, next. ASO also assisted with civic and voter empowerment, that, which was for the twenty twenty-two candidate forums, the voter campaign, communication one-on-one speech events and Anthony's Scaramucci. I'm sorry if I did not pronounce the last name right. Great. We also tabled and tabled that multiple events throughout the semester in an attempt to register voters. We received a grant from ASO, actually provided them with the grant for them to decorate their table and for them to utilize some photo props. They planned and organized speaker events and raised student voter awareness by hanging posters around campus and advocating in classrooms. Next, so this is my favorite slide, and it's a conference opportunity. And so ASO had the opportunity and the honor of going to the California Community College Student Affairs Association. That was last year. We also did the American Student Association of Community College that was just recently at Washington DC. We also did the General Assembly and the twenty twenty-two Student Trustee Workshop, which Corey attended. So in the triple C, which we would call CSAW, it included workshops on leadership, engaging in student advocacy and professional skills. So this provided ASO leaders resources for us to actually gain and bring back to Antelope Valley College to provide to students on what advocacy really stands for and what student government really assists and helps the community college and the importance of the student voice. During the time of the American Student Association of Community College, we were at Washington, we actually went and spoke to my gosh, my mind just went blank, sorry. We went and spoke to the Assistant Legislator of Mike Garcia and the importance of DACA and how DACA affects a lot of our students here at Antelope Valley College and why we should continue to advocate for DACA so that these students can go ahead and create a better future for themselves and their family. So that was pretty awesome to do. And then during the time that Corey was in a student trustee workshop, he had the opportunity to meet and talk with other student trustees from around the state. He learned how to educate himself in the systems of, of policy and lawmaking on the legislative level and advocated for all schools to have basic needs and food giveaway. The two weekends ago, we were able to attend the SS triple C, which over forty amended resolutions were written. We also engaged in workshops and we were able to listen to some keynote speakers. This was actually one of the largest student attendance that had, they had ever had before in previous years. So that was pretty awesome. And we learned the importance about advocacy as well. And then next, and this is us telling you guys, thank you for all your supporting, your help and continuing to assist ASO and all of the students. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. I need to apologize to Miranda and Mr. Van Wyder.
Want to make sure everyone's awake. I am sure that we all share that anxiousness for the games. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for coming to ABC Palmdale. Thank you for supporting us. There are great things happening here. And I was reminded this morning as we sat and we looked at the new student services building. There's a newness, there's an excitement that comes with that, isn't there? We see the, the busyness and this positive energy that occurs. Well, nearly five years ago, we also experienced that, didn't we, Trusty Adams? We experienced that same optimism, that same busyness and positive energy. As we look forward, we hope, we hope that we were fulfilling the award that the Senator Wills gave us. That we're fulfilling the promise for us to be an outstanding community partner. So Antelope Valley College Palmdale Center is not just about serving our students and serving our faculty or the institution, but it's about serving the community as a whole. And that's what we're here for, isn't it? Next slide, please. So we're here. We are here in Palmdale. Dr. Davis probably won't let me say this, but he wrote on my whiteboard at one point, a college for Palmdale in Palmdale. I think that's how he wrote it. As we were talking, we were looking forward. When we look at this slide, we know that first established in two thousand and two with eating classes at Palmdale High School. In two thousand and six, we moved to a location just down the street. I think there's a handful of individuals in this room that probably shared that space with me. I shared that space in a small room and at a library, moving a cart of reference books in and out. Now we see the development of said center. When you walk into this entrance and to the right, you see the library center. To the left, you see a learning center. Down the hall, you see sixteen classrooms and four labs. We have served over the last five years, thousands of students, both in instruction and student services. Now we're here. March eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen, I believe is the date that we moved into this building. We have over fifty thousand square feet between the three buildings, fifty thousand square feet of instructional space that can change lives and bring that what I would consider the eleven of the loaf of Palmdale. Next slide, please. How is this made possible? Not the person that's top of that, not at all. I am new here. It is upon those that have come before me that have made Palmdale what it is now. Programs, services, instruction, training, and have built what we consider a spirit and environment of trust. Not shown here are the eleven student workers. So I'm okay with going after ASO. Because it's the student workers that make our center when they walk in at the information desk, when they come into our door. It is the students first who meet students and in those interactions, we're able to serve them. Next slide, please. So what do we offer here at Palmdale? We offer all that Lancaster has. We are blessed with the opportunity to have all student services here. It is our goal to build upon that, to build upon each of the, the offerings here semester to semester. In spring of twenty-three, we, we hosted five hundred and two courses and with seventy-five face-to-face. In fall, we'll have five hundred and twenty-one within, again, anticipated ninety-one face-to-face. Our goal is to climb over a hundred and beyond. We'll do so by offering these services and by supporting the academic disciplines that are represented by the leaders behind me. This happens when we have a clear vision. The question is, is the vision that Palmdale becomes a miniature Lancaster or is it a niche? Do we serve non-credit? Are we a technical college? We must decide what that vision is and then move towards that, build infrastructure and then reach out. I'm grateful to Alejandro for his efforts in helping us to, again, get that word out. It is our opportunity to reach from Palmdale and Easter, Little Rock and beyond. We are and we should be considered one of the primary providers of second or higher education and with our secondary partners. There's so much that we can do and it happens because we have these services. Thanks. Now, in addition to the great things that we have here, the Palmdale staff also supports the inmate education program, the Rising Scholars. In collaboration with the Dean of Social Behavioral Sciences, the Palmdale Center Director, the Administrative Coordinator and the Counselor work towards these ends. Highlights include, excuse me, Rising Scholars Career currently offers twelve multi-disciplinary sessions over to two hundred students, two hundred incarcerated students. The program just recently graduates seventeen in the spring of twenty-two and we currently offer communications study arts of trans, excuse me, associate arts for transfer degree. We are building to the future and we're proud to be part of that, to support them. And next slide, thank you. Palmdale Technology Center. Trusty Adams and I walked through the, the technology center today. We started with the maker space and innovation hub made possible by the KD or the California Aerospace Technologies Institute of Excellence. This will be a hub for discovery, for creation, for connection and outreach between the college and its community. Innovation will happen there. I'm happy to report that we continue to move forward in that effort. Grateful MI for Ron and Frank who have moved that effort forward and to IT. We're still waiting for some major components and when they come, it will be ready and they will shape that vision together. Thank you. And I'll leave you with this. In June, we have a, an event coming. This is on June seventh. And I cannot remember the time, but if Kino were here, she would correct me, but it's on the seventh of June. We have our summer block party. This is a, an incredible event for us to reach out to our partners, our collaborators and those that we, again, our Palmdale community. It builds engagement and it builds, again, understanding of what we offer to our community. And so certainly I offer my invitations to each of you and to all in the room to come. I understand that there may be a dunking tank for deans, so I'll leave that with you. I don't know what time it is, actually. I, Kino would be, she'd be like, I think it's four, okay, so, but thank you very much. Thank you for being here at Palmdale and supporting us.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. This time we'll call upon our presenter for online education success update.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to introduce my colleague. Professor Kim Barker. Kim is the Division Chair of Child and Family Education in the Department of Social and Behavioral Sciences. And in my time working with her, I found her to be extremely dedicated to improving education at all levels. My name is Dr. Alex Periski. I'm the Director of Instructional Technology and Media. I've been guiding our distance education program and remote efforts here at ABC over the last four years. Recently, we presented at the Education Development Conference in early March in Bangkok, Thailand. It's a UNESCO affiliated conference that primarily serves academics, institutional leaders and educational ministers. We were invited to present the opening session. And we were invited to present the opening session because we felt the, the, the conference promoters felt that it would set the theme for the conference. Next slide, please. Over nineteen, so three years ago. Three years ago, probably right at this time, we were, there was so much uncertainty about the status of education as the pandemic showed up unexpectedly in our lives. Three years ago, so April two thousand and twenty. I just want to thank the board for their leadership and vision and improving over half a million dollars in teacher stipends to support ABC's online teacher training program. The training program was developed in collaboration with instructors like Professor Kim Barker with the intent of not only preparing faculty to teach online, but to provide them with all the tools they needed to be successful. Our faculty responded. Next slide, please. What you're seeing is these, this, these are grabbed from our institutional effectiveness, effectiveness and research group. They're basically student success rates. One of the key measures of an institution's efficacy is success rates, C minus or better in classes. Typically, the effectiveness of distance education programs is determined by comparing the success rates of online sections to their face-to-face counterparts. So what you're seeing up on the, up on the slide deck and in front of you, the top number that you're seeing in each category, you want to be looking at the twenty-one, twenty-two, which is the last year that we've measured this. But you're seeing the success rates in most of these cases is surpassing the traditional success rates in the classroom. Next slide, please. Again, here's some more. You look at the far right column, but over the last three years, our success rates were up when most of the state, their success rates were going down. Distance education success rates typically lag about ten to twenty percent behind traditional success rates. So this is, these, these numbers that you're seeing, what you're seeing is actually you're seeing numbers that are flipped where our online success rates are higher than our traditional success rates. Next slide, please. So, so where we are today, as far as after this training, we've trained over two hundred and fifty of our instructors. Approximately thirty-four percent of our classes are taught online. Our student success rate and our retention rates are greatly increased and talking to Bob Nash, who's the dean of the California Virtual Campus who oversees all the distance education efforts, we're now in the top five out of a hundred and sixteen California institutions with respect to online success rates. Many institutions were able to put together some kind of training by, by the time the summer of twenty twenty came around, but they didn't see the upticks in the success rate numbers like we did here at ABC. And so what did we do differently? And my colleague, Kim Barker, is going to talk about that.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you all for having us. I'd like to thank Dr. Davis and Dr. Varr for supporting us. And thank you, Dr. Zellit, for leading the way in humanizing education. Your implementation and commitment to caring campus is just one of the many ways you continue to support the humanization of education. Your innovative lens and understanding of the importance of not only national intersectionality, but international section, intersectionality is unmatched and we are beyond fortunate to have your leadership of the college. So thank you for that. So what did we do different? Humanization of education. We had to define what it means to humanize education. This definition, next slide, please, is where we began. And we soon understood that our definition is a living document, ever-changing, because every experience matters. We knew, next, please. We knew we had to focus on the students with With a concerted effort. In understanding their needs. Next please. This process meant meeting them where they were. Embracing and responding to their experiences. Focusing on intersectionality in its entirety. Valuing their individual experiences. Their similar experiences. Their shared experiences. Meeting students where they were. Looking beyond traditionally inflexible concept of high achievement and college and career readiness. Responding to students' individual needs in a way that cultivates optimal growth. Next please. Identifying and helping. Them identify. The micro and macro. Uh, self-actualization that could occur for them. Valuing interpersonal and interpersonal connections. And we began to understand. Through that concept. The importance as instructors. How important it was. That we valued our own experiences. That if we did not connect. To our experiences. Our why. Our purpose. We couldn't connect to our passion. And it was important that we did that so that we could help them. Connect to their purpose and passion. Next please. We look at the humanistic theory where. Motivation. Is the basis. And the idea that people have. In connecting. And performing. To the necessary actions and achievement. And so we began to see the value. In the multiple intelligences. And how online learning had become another preference in learning. My little girl. Went from being behind two grades. To entering the gate program this year. Because she connected. To online teaching. She connected. And found her intelligence. We learned that we couldn't separate face-to-face learning from the online learning. Because they are reciprocal in nature. We take from one to give to another. We take from another to give to one. And we learned the many ways. Next please. We learned the many ways interpersonal and interpersonal connection and reflection informs the creation of meaningful, respectful, engaging classroom experiences. In every discipline, every grade. Every modality. We learned, we discovered how connecting to our individual experiences, passions and purpose can enhance our ability to identify and value. Support the success of students in a way that collectively celebrates individualism. And promotes diversity. Equity. Inclusion. Accessibility. And belonging. And this led to the statistics and the success shared by Alex. And our invitation. To open the Education and Development Conference in Bangkok. We were validated by our peers. As other presenters referred back to our keynote. International institutions shared the same concerns. We learned about mentoring and coaching from Dr. Engelbert in Thailand. Intelligent accountability from Dr. Hyde in Indonesia. From, from Indonesia. Qualities of diversity from Professor Sekai in Japan, from Japan. Positive education. From Dr. Wong. From Hong Kong. Intersectionality. Respect. Connection. Does that sound to them? It should. Because we learned. That all of those are part of Antelope Valley College. And that Antelope Valley College is leading the way. In humanizing education. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Periski and Ms. Barker. Excellent presentation. The fourth count of closed session. 4.1 has been withdrawn, so. Here. Uh, 4.3. Consideration of public employee discipline dismissal release of employee pursuant to government code. Section 54957. On a motion made by Michelle Harvey and seconded by Steve Buffalo with a Form 1 vote. The board upheld an appeal of a letter of reprimand for an academic employee. The no vote was brought forward. On a motion made by Steve Buffalo. And seconded by Michael Adams with a 3-2 vote. The board. Denied. The suspension for an academic employee. With the approval votes coming from Michelle Harvey and Michael Adams. Uh, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So move. Your second?
Sir.
Any discussion?
I have a couple comments on 13.3 and 13.6. Uh. On the 13.3. One of the, the back of the pages listing the different categories of people being hired. And one of the. Categories that listed as a person has a. Professional expert. So what kind of title is that of professional expert? Professional expert can, can be in any number of disciplines, say, for instance, a visiting speaker or a visiting instructor in art class or. In some kind of skilled-based class to come in on a temporary basis to give demonstrations or specialized instruction. Okay, thank you. Uh, on the other one, the 13.6 is the. Travel report. Um, I counted 20 items. With expenditures over $2,000 on the travel. And, uh. On the first page of the travel report, it lists the $82,528. Second page, it lists $20,362. Uh, we have people going all over the country. Uh, going as high as $6,000. Or 4,000, 5,000. With Zoom and all electronic technology is all this travel necessary.
Sir, we, uh, we are the best stewards of public funds that we can be. Uh, there are many, uh, meetings that are attended by Zoom in addition to these things. Um, there are specialized trainings, advocacy meetings, lobbying meetings, all in the best interest of the college.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. Action items 14.1. Approval of resolution number 22-23/13, preserving lifelong learning, self-development and kinesiology education opportunities for California community college schools. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 14.2. Approval of resolution 22-23/14 for the purchase of used aircraft. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. All right, at this time, uh, we have a presentation.
Hello, my name is Riley Dwyer, Dean of Student Equity, Language and Communication Arts.
Members of the board, Madam President Greg Borman, Dean of Protective Education. This evening's presentation is about the purchase of aircraft for all the aeronautical related programs here at Antelope Valley College. Next slide please. For you is a list of all the programs that these said aircraft will touch. Ranging from eight-week certificates. Multiple associate degrees and our baccalaureate degree.
So one of the things that I want to address here is the use of student equity funds. You have a great deal of data before you and I promise I'm not going to go through it. Uh, there are a few things I do want to touch on. If we could, um, take a look at the, this slide, we have almost 72% Hispanic enrollment. Um, if you recall, a couple of months ago, you all approved the student equity plan and one of the targets, uh, one of our outcomes was for Latino males, Latinx males. And veterans. So this program, um, is being supported by student equity based on that data. So what we're doing is directly supporting. The targeted areas that we are meaning to close gaps. If we can just zoom way forward, Bill. I want to jump about five. Um, these slides are the, the retention and success which are extant, astounding in this area. I also want to acknowledge a couple of people. Um, Dr. Svetlana DePozas and Vanessa Escobar, who put this together, this information for us and Dr. Nina Grohl. In addition, we have. Uh, Dr. Maria Clinton here, who is primarily responsible for, for these programs, so I want to shout out. Um, again, so going back to the, to this information, we see the success rates for our Latinx at 94% when our. Full population within the college is not that high. Um, the, the last one, and then just go ahead, almost to the very end, Bill. The last area that I want to discuss are the veterans right there. Look at those astounding numbers for degrees and certificates. Our veterans are also involved in this program. Um, uh, Dean Borman will discuss some of the, the job opportunities. But this program is one that produces jobs in a big way. And it produces, um, transfers. And, excuse me, certificates. Sorry about that. Um, so I'm going to hand it over. Next slide. I'm going to hand it over, um, to Dean Borman and he can discuss the very specifics of. The program and how these will support.
Thank you. Purchased aircraft will touch the AFAB program, providing us the most up-to-date aircraft skins for AFAB students to look at. Power plants for the Aero program. And for the AFMT program, actual brand new, not brand new, but up-to-date airframes. Uh, will also provide us the avionics to catch up with the new FAA regulations students must learn on. To be qualified to get jobs. Examples of jobs would include our AFAB students. Who are guaranteed an interview with Northrop when they complete the eight, first eight-week class. On completion and acceptance of the position, $25 to $30 an hour, approximately 60K a year for an eight-week course certificate. Potential within five years to be over $100,000 with just the AWE certificate. The Aero program starts out at 70K and our bachelor students 84K. It also provides us the opportunity to apply for a secondary. Accreditation with the AFMT program that will be recognized by Lockheed in which Lockheed will reimburse their employees to get the baccalaureate degree. That means there will never, ever again be any question about we won't be AFMT program and we may have to double the size of cohort and bring in more faculty. To offset the need for Lockheed to pay for their employees to get bachelor's degrees. Next slide. Questions?
Yeah, I have a, uh, number of questions.
Yeah, I'm sure you do and I'm ready. We're excited about this.
First of all, have you purchased from a broker, like you will in these states? Uh, aircraft parts?
Aircraft, aircraft parts.
From the Defense Department, where do you get the parts for the program in the past?
Defense Department brokers in the past, yes, and manufacturers.
The manufacturers, from the broker?
Those are just parts, excuse me.
From a broker?
Uh, manufacturers? Yes.
The middleman?
Yes. Aircraft that we currently have sitting at Foxfield will purchase through brokers and were when they purchased operation. One of the aircraft will be used for students to tear apart, which will eventually make the aircraft inoperable. And the other will be the operational piece to be used as examples for the students.
Isn't it true you can get parts and planes free from the Defense Department? Is that correct?
Please.
Come on up. And who are you?
I am Dr. Maria Clinton. I am the Department Chair for the Aeronautical Sciences and Technology Department.
What about the Defense Department?
So the Defense Department. The issue with the Defense Department is you're looking at military aircraft. The aircraft that we are purchasing is commercial aviation aircraft. They have a completely different avionics setup and system, right? Because we have to produce students that are going to go out and they can get a job either in general aviation, commercial aviation. Or the Department of Defense, right? So we do have donated aircraft that, that cover the general piece and also that cover the Department of Defense. We don't have anything for the commercial piece. And the commercial piece is the important piece because that's the piece that all of the programs would be able to use versus an F-16. It doesn't have the same types of systems as Cessnas does.
Okay. You're sending our students to Plant Silver in Palmdale for a job interview.
Correct.
They make military aircraft.
They're making military aircraft, yes, they are. But it's different when you talk about avionics programs and other things of that nature. Those types of airplanes don't have those types of avionics systems in them.
So, but we're training them to go to Plant, we're not training them for general aviation.
Are, yes, we are. We're training for all three. The majority of them go to Plant 42, but that's not where all of them go.
Well, we have instructors from the plants teaching them.
Yes, we do.
Have you asked, um. Plants to help with?
But they couldn't donate that, that type of aircraft.
Well, we can ensure that. If anybody asked them. If you paid and helped get aircraft, since, since we are letting them train our students and we're sending them over there, could we ask them?
So I don't know if you're aware, but Northrop Grumman donates. Hundreds of thousands of dollars to the programs every year. Every single student. Gets a final project in one class. One class, they spend almost $2,000 per student. For the final projects that are given to them that are a requirement for interviewing. So we already get thousands of dollars in donations, not just in materials, but also in expertise from Northrop Grumman. Lockheed Martin, not so much, but from Northrop Grumman, we do.
We're, we're training their employees. Anybody wanting to? We're training our employees?
Might it be, might it be helpful if we? Made the different, differentiated between supplanting and supplementing? That this is a supplementation?
So I believe that we have another trustee who wanted to ask their question, but Trustee Reeves, I think, um, what they're, what they're trying to say is there's. We do, um. We do have a very good working relationship with our industry partners and I know Dr. Clinton and probably Dean Borman could both speak. In addition to the in-kind donations that we get in equipment as well from our partners. So there, there is a lot of support. And the kind of aircraft that they're talking about purchasing here don't come from those industries.
Okay, but this proposal you have before us. It was going to grant you, uh. $1.9 billion to go out and purchase some aircraft.
Yes, sir.
And without bidding. Without any bidding. So, uh, that, what's that all about? This is, it's not going to be competitive. You already have somebody that's going to show you the plane.
Correct.
Right, but you're not looking around, try to find other planes?
We did.
You did?
We did.
Can you show that? Can you, uh, can you? Can you show that? Can you demonstrate to the board that you have gone out and solicited bids? As many times we have people saying that all the time up here, oh, we got bids for this and that.
Sir, if I may, the sellers are not looking to us in a competitive way. They don't come to the colleges. They're putting their aircraft up for sale. In fact, some that that the program was interested in have already been purchased by others because of the time it takes for us to go through our process. So this is us seeking to purchase something, and people don't come to us with a bid to say, please buy my aircraft for X amount of dollars, and that's different than the contracting process, and so this is a different situation.
Yeah, we don't, I I don't know who these people are. I mean, can you identify these people we're going to buy it from, and what specific aircraft, and how much it's going to be each one? That's not asking people actually.
Sir, what the what the resolution asks for is the permission for the college to do its business, and the board grants permission or it doesn't. The details that you're speaking about are below the policy level, and so the board approves expenditures, and then through granting authority to me, your sole employee, I work with my team to make sure that we follow all of the processes that are involved, policy procedures.
Well, it's not a question of trust, President, it's trust that we're guardians of the taxpayers' money. We need to know where this money is being spent for what. We don't need the rewriting blank checks. Call for the question.
All those, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
No?
Fourteen point three, approval of memorandum of understanding between. It's okay. Fourteen point three, approval of memorandum of understanding between Antler Valley College Federation of Teachers, ABCFT, and Antler Valley Community College District, ABCCD, regarding adding two class times to the existing block schedule. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. If you have someone else, give us a brief synopsis of what this is going to.
I can, I can inform the board. The MOU of understanding between ABCFT and the district is for a two-year pilot program where we add, we just add two class periods to the day. Right now, they're, the class schedule starts roughly around eight in the morning. There's a, it looks like a high school schedule, so there's about a break at around eleven, and so we have six teaching periods in the day. In order to increase capacity and make sure that our students have access to classes, and we have a bigger schedule, so classes aren't scheduled. Our room capacity, and thereby thereby increasing our DES. We are starting, this pilot program will start us at six-thirty in the morning, and we will basically teach straight through the day.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fourteen point four, approval of services agreement between Antler Valley Community College District and PDL Incorporated for providing appropriately qualified interim candidates for the position of interim dean athletic director. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President, I have a question. This company that's going to give us this candidate dean athletic director, is this same company that provided candidates and candidates?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of sabbatical leave for Dr. Karina Karapacian, Georgie, and Sheree. Yeah, and Zoo, this is for one semester, beginning spring of twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point six, approval of memorandum of understanding of articulation of courses between Antler Valley Community College District and Antler Valley Union Principal District. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I thought we had some kind of program already in effect for housing students that we can have homes. Is that correct?
Fourteen point six about is about the articulation of academic courses. It's not about student housing, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point seven, approval of amendment number one of memorandum of agreement of agreement between Antler Valley Community College District and the People Concerned for Housing Navigation and Location Program for Students Experiencing Homelessness. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen point eight, approval of amendment number one of professional services agreement between Antler Valley Community College District and Robert Hayes, PBS, Valleywide Dental Corporation Incorporated. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Fourteen point nine, approval to administering the University of Texas at Austin surveys, SENSE and CCSSSE during the fall twenty twenty-three and spring twenty twenty-four semesters. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Fourteen point ten, approval of agreement between Antler Valley Community College District and around AV Transit Media for bus graph advertising. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I might as well comment on fourteen point ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. It has to do with marketing. I'm sorry, the marketing director is not here tonight. Yes, I, okay. I, I'm concerned that the board wasn't in on this and had a chance to discuss the marketing plans.
And why I think you need to discuss just.
Fourteen ten.
Okay, well, if you want to do it piece by piece, I'll do it. I'll be happy to.
Sir, can I, can I remind you that the board approved a contract of marketing services?
Right, right, right.
And then there's a whole, a whole suite of marketing services that we've contracted with, and these these complement that whole plan, the marketing plan.
Okay, my concern is, and I brought this up before, this marketing does not include our local newspaper, Antler Valley Press, which publicizes a lot of things for the college free, and I can't understand why we don't utilize the local press to put the word out about the college. Is there any explanation why we don't use the local newspaper?
This is our executive director of marketing, Alejandro Guzman.
Hello.
Hi, how are you? Actually, you know, we are running an ad with the AV Press. Not at liberty to discuss the details of it, but we will be running advertisement with them. It's something that's been embargoed until the release date, but we will be running ads with them. So to answer the question, yeah, we're taking a very integrated approach and doing digital, social media, outdoor, bus, banner ads, anywhere really where we can find our target audience.
Okay, one more question. You have statistics that show how many students have come to this college as a result of the marketing that we have done recently with the rats on the bus, the billboards, and all that stuff. Do you have any idea? Do the students check off the box on the application? Where did you find out about AV College? Do you have any stats on that?
We don't, nothing recent right now, because we haven't had any recent campaigns. But one, once we start this campaign, which is focused on summer and fall, we will be able to learn through our office, IERP. There there are opportunities to ask students where they found out about the college and what determined their decision. Exactly what influenced their decision to come to the college.
We're putting out sixty-six thousand dollars for four, for four months of billboards, and we're putting out four hundred and eight thousand dollars for digital signs. I mean, we need to know if that handed out.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
We have a public comment on fourteen point ten. We have a first and a second. All the, any, any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Dr. Bowen.
So, you know, I totaled up the total budget for the marketing efforts, fourteen ten, the fourteen, fourteen ten to the fifth one, and it amounted to about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the majority of that funding is derived from Perkins Grants. So my first question was, are are the funds derived from Perkins Perkins Grants specifically earmarked for marketing? The second question is, was there any marketing analysis performed to assess the effectiveness of running the ads? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. So Perkins Funds are allocated to different light items based on what we propose as a college. We put the budget forward and submit that to the state. So we indicated to the state that we, as a college, were going to use X amount of dollars for advertising. And so, so that's where that came from. There's been a lot of data gone into even before Mr. Guzman came on board, but but since he's been here, there's been a lot of investigation about most effective techniques and modes and, you know, methods of advertisement to reach our students, hence the multi-pronged approach and looking at a variety of ways to reach our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourteen point eleven, approval of contract between Antler Valley Community College District and Lamar for billboard advertising throughout the Antler Valley. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Fourteen point twelve, approval of agreement between Antler Valley Community College District and Alprap Media for billboard advertising on the fourteen freeway. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Fourteen point thirteen, approval of contract between Antler Valley Community College District and Spectrum Reach for commercial advertising. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Fourteen point fourteen, approval of amendment number one to marketing services agreement between Antler Valley Community College District and Vision Point Marketing LLC for digital and social media advertising. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Fourteen point fifteen, approval of agreement with Edsites to provide student success technology. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Fourteen point sixteen, approval to extend the use of Foundation for California Community Colleges FCCC Master Agreement with Career America LLC, doing business as Ocelent through April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Fourteen point seventeen, approval to extend the use of the Golden Star Technology Pigback Agreement with Los Angeles Community College District for the purchase of audiovisual security and point-of-sale equipment and services. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Fourteen point eighteen, approval to extend the use of the Foundation for California Community College Colleges FCCC Master Agreement with NG Web Solutions LLC, doing business as Next Gen Web Solutions through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Fourteen point nineteen, approval to purchase scholarship software service from NG Web Solutions LLC, doing business as Next Gen Web Solutions through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, to assist the Foundation with web and software solutions. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Fourteen point two oh, approval to utilize the NASBO Value Point Cooperative Agreement with Dell Marketing LP for the purchase of computer equipment, peripherals, and related services. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Fourteen point two one, approval of project assignment agreement, PAA, with America Engineering Laboratories Incorporated for laboratory of record services for Verizon Tower cell upgrade, number twenty-three dash zero two seven. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Fourteen point two two, approval of project assignment amendment, PAA, with Vital Inspection Services Incorporated for inspector of record services for the Horizon Cell Tower Upgrade, number twenty-three dash zero two seven. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Fourteen point two three, approval to renew the health desk management software solution from Abdalasian PTY LTD through March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Board, if you will allow me, I'd like to combine fourteen point two four, fourteen point two five, and fourteen point two six as they all deal with strong workforce funds. Do I have a motion? Any discussion on any of those three action items? All those in favor? Aye, motion passes. Fourteen point two seven, approval of contract with Red Hawk Fence for J eight thirty-fifth West Property Fencing Project number twenty-three dash zero two three with redevelopment project funds. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Fourteen point two eight, approval of furniture purchased with Sierra School Equipment for Swing Phase Two, project number eighteen dash zero one one, with Title V funds and Student Equity Funds. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Board, again, I would like to to do a block approval on fourteen point two nine, fourteen point three oh, and fourteen point three one as all three of these action items deal with Measure AB funds. Do I have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes on fourteen point two nine, fourteen point three oh, and fourteen point three five. Informational items, fifteen is for a board for your information and review. Fifteen point one, first reading of board policy and revision of existing procedures. Election of student trustee, and fifteen point two, first reading of board policy, twenty-two hundred, board duties and responsibilities. All right, this time, I'd like to call Tamira Palmer.
Wow, we are here. We're doing it. I don't know if this thing is on. Oh, it's on. Okay. So hi, from the Academic Senate, a couple of things. So one of the things that got brought up with open comments at our last session was, and I will quote, why is travel documentation more complex than applying for a visa and arranging travel to go overseas? Um, so Chrome River is not popular. I don't know if you're aware, but our travel procedure is is difficult. There's a lot more, but you know, we're, it's lands. Okay, so Chrome River, not popular. We might want to look at that. Faculty Recognition Day, we would love to invite the board to join us to recognize our newly tenured faculty, our newly hired faculty, our retirees, our scholar-in-residence, our adjunct, outstanding adjunct award. That's going to happen on April twenty-seventh from five to seven in the Fine Arts Quad. We would love to see you there. Um, bring your wallets because we are going to have beer for purchase, and that donation, I believe, is going to the Hearts and Hands Pantry. Um, we do have people going to Senate plenary, so we have two senators actually going to the spring plenary, um, and two senators going to Leadership Academy, so we're excited about that. Um, we have a new Academic Senate President for the twenty-three, twenty-three, uh, twenty-three, twenty-six term, so Paul Hansman, who is here. And the Honors Convocation, yeah.
I know.
Um, and the Honors Convocation, we would love to have you guys come to the Honors Convocation as well. This is the Honors Transfer Alliance Program. So these are students that actually complete additional um, requirements to meet transfer requirements for, you know, special agreements to get priority. Um, this is going to happen Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, from six to eight in the Performing Arts Theater, so we would love to see you folks there as well. Celebrate our students who are graduating, transferring. Um, we also have our subject area awards happening at that event as well. And I believe I am mercifully done, so have a good evening. Thank you so much.
All right.
Okay, Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, Dr. Jason Bowen.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank all of you, the Board of Trustees, for your work. I know that you put students first, and you're working hard for what's best for our college. I'd like to thank my executive team, uh, Antelope Valley Col- Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, Kathy Osburn, Cindy Hendricks, Kent Moser, Scott Lee, and Carla Corona. They believe in the cause, they believe in serving faculty, the work is grueling and exhausting. Uh, the highs can be exceptionally high and the lows can be exceptionally low. Yet, uh, what I find remarkable is that these individuals find a way to keep pushing forward and doing what's best for faculty. Uh, the executive team is not the entire union leadership. Uh, I'd also like to thank Alberto Leronaga, Tamira Palmetto de Spain, and Eugene Segal. Uh, they are, Alberto's our our membership director and communications director, and Tamira Palmetto de Spain and Eugene Segal are members of our negotiation team, and they volunteer quite a bit of their time to get all of the work done. Alberto's also a member of the negotiations team, so he's pulling the triple duty. I'd like to thank Ariane Johnson, our CFT field representative, who who is essential to a lot of the work that we get done. Uh, I'd also like to thank faculty for all of the work that they do. Uh, for example, Peter McLaughlin, who's enthusiastic and has done considerable research for us on his own time, he's volunteered uh, the results of his work and its work that we've been able to incorporate uh, into the things that we do. Lastly, but not least, I'd like to thank Pamela Ford for her efforts to strengthen uh, the bond between the faculty union and the classified union, and I don't know of too many people who I learn so much from all the time, but she is an incredible leader uh, who's who's made a remarkable difference in the world, and I hope to one day make as much of a difference as she has in the world. And with that, I'd like to say, thank you, and when we're done, have a great night.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. All right, sixteen point three, Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, Pamela Ford.
Good evening. Um, I first want to say thank you for the wonderful event today. I I, it was so nice to be at present at the opening day or open house for the Student Services Building. I'm sorry, it's late, I'm tired. We're way past my bedtime. Anyway, um, I, it it was just nice to see the city, city, state, and local officials, and also the administrators, board members, many of the retirees that came back to see what in the world happened to our dilapidated Student Services Building and the wonderful environment that we're in now. So I just, I'm happy to be there. Um, as with everything, there's always bugs and quirks to work out, but it's a much better, much healthier and cleaner environment, and so I'm glad that that event took place. I um, had the opportunity to attend the Leadership Academy last week. Uh, I was invited to attend, and not only did I sit on the panel and share information, but I I took notes and learned a lot from it as well, and I was also asked to reach out to be a part of the next class, so that's a real sea change. I know that's Jennifer's influence. Um, so anyway, it, the classified recognition is going to be the third week in May, and we're going to have, uh, for a change, workshops for classified to attend that will provide staff development and opportunities for growth for classified professionals. And I would like to invite each and every one of you, Board of Trustee members, to attend, and also, uh, Dr. Jason Bowen. As he said, we're we're building a bond to try to be classified and faculty together because we all serve students, and I think I finally got them convinced that without us, those students don't get to the classroom. So as great as they think they are, it's us that gets the students from the beginning, and it's us who march, helps them march in the end. So anyway, keep that in mind, Jason. Um, let's see. Uh, and I'm going to tell you something really interesting that happened. Marina Kay has this this reading group. And so I was telling my son about it, and he works for the school district in Las Vegas. And um, there's a student that, a student worker that he has that works with him. And this, I sent him the video of this, the video that she sent out about the football player who became the doctor. And this student is that kind of person. So he saw that video, and he was so jazzed and so excited. And when he found out that he was actually going to be here at Antelope Valley College, I mean, he's chomping at the bit, wishing that he could be a part of it. So I talked to Marina Kay and asked her, is it going to be online? Because when you see a student that has promise and potential, even though he's in uh, middle school right now, you know they're going to move on to high school and college, and I just know this young man is going to do great things. And so, um, she's uh, been very supportive. I've been talking to her about this, and so we'll see what happens. But I just think it's nice that Antelope Valley College is reaching all the way to another state to influence students. Um, classified will be attending the scholarship convocation, and we will be giving uh, two scholarships to students this year. It's something that we've been doing for a lot of years. Michael never fails to support us. And it's a really good event, but we have the craft fair, and we use the proceeds from the craft fair for scholarships for our students. And um, I guess that's it for tonight, so good night.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. All right, sixteen point four, confidential management supervisory administrator employees. Okay, sixteen point five, ASO. Diane left. Okay, sixteen point six, Antelope Valley College Foundation, Miss Diane here. Sixteen point seven.
Thank you, Barbara. I just want to tell a, tell everyone who made this morning possible, thank you so much. It was a fabulous event. Shawmi, thanks to you and your team for all the wonderful work and facilities. Um, you may not know, but the groundspeople were out at five this morning, making sure that the last details were put together and just working really hard. And so thank you to those classified professionals who really were working above and beyond. Thanks to your team. Alejandro, thank you for organizing so much stuff. Patty, thanks to you. Um, it's, it really does take a team to make a college like this fire on all pistons, and I'm very grateful to serve alongside this wonderful executive team, serve alongside the campus leaders, our Academic Senate President, Jason, Pamela, all of you. Um, together we go far. So thank you. And Board of Trustees, thank you so much for your energy tonight. Um, it's been a long meeting, and I think you've earned a dedication.
What number comments, Mr. Buffalo?
Oh, the Dodgers beat the Giants, man. That's it.
That's it.
I'd like that comment struck from the record.
All right, Mr. Reeves.
Okay, I want to thank Judge P. Gang, Adam, and Beau Lo and our president, the board, the Nixon, and Patty for working and securing that beautiful building which we dedicated to them. It's true that our efforts, that that luxury, uh, thanks for.
Uh, this reminds me of City of Palmdale Council meetings where we used to go until two or three in the morning because the mayor never liked ending the meetings. Unfortunately, President Zellet has not followed in that footsteps, so I I'm very appreciative of that. Um, I did tour the Palmdale Technology Center with Van Rider today, and that facility has the potential to be limitless. It will be a shining jewel of Palmdale and the Antelope Valley, and I think in three or four or five years, uh, it's going to be nationally recognized.
Sorry, no comment, no comment this evening. Um, I just want to say, uh, I I can't begin to thank everyone because the minute I try to do that, I I know I'm going to miss more people than I could ever imagine, but um, I'm very much honored to have been a part of the the board and um, the team who had the vision to ask our community in two thousand sixteen for that three hundred fifty million dollar bond, and uh, it was a huge undertaking because we knew we had to have a a large percentage uh, a support from this community. I believe it was like seventy-some percent, Shawmi, am I right? It was like, ah, it's a pretty big number, and yet our community came out and gave us that support. So anytime we have the the privilege of walking in and seeing um, the the vision and the dream uh, transform from a vision to, you know, um, a completed project, as we saw this morning and have it many times now in the past, it is, it's just, um, uplifts my heart so much because I feel like we are uh, with the with the support of the community, doing what's best for future, for the future of Antelope Valley Community College. And I was just going to tell uh, Van that when I ran for this board, and he's not here, but I'll tell him next time, but when I ran for the board in two thousand thirteen, uh, I, we had to be elected by the entire Antelope Valley community then, if we were not in districts. And so one of the things that people in Palmdale harped on with me over and over and over and over was we hate that center on Palmdale Boulevard. Now, this one is in a building down the street, and I went there, I had to see how bad it behaved. That was pretty bad to say, and so to see this, to every time we have the pleasure of coming here and and uh, just seeing the great work that's that's being done here, um, makes me very proud that we did that since, you know, since two thousand thirteen. So I'm just, uh, thank you to Dr. Zellet, thank you Patty. Patty, you're like incredible, I don't know what the person, I can't even put adjectives to Patty, just Patty. I I I have to just tell you this, I know it's late, but it was the oddest thing. I had to go back to the college today, and I didn't tell her anytime I was coming, and I got to the door and was about to pull out my card, and the door opened, and there stood Patty. I was like, Patty, how do you do this? How do you know? Like, did you see me telling her something? But I just want to thank everybody, the opening today was was an incredible event, so thank you to Dr. Zella and the entire team who put that together. More, we will see each other back May eighth at, back at the Fine Arts Building or the Theater Arts. I have no idea what time it is. Meeting adjourned at ten twenty-one, could be worse. Could be worse.